Can I join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? We can get this going.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing I'd like to do is approve the agenda. Does anyone have any additions, changes, or anything to the agenda? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mark Bartuschek. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. First thing on the agenda, we are gonna have a public hearing on our liquor license for Rhonda Eldor. Mike, you wanna...
I'll take that, thank you Mayor. This is the time and place for a public hearing on the issuance of an on-sale wine license, an on-sale beer license for Rhonda Eldor of Chameleons, Inc., doing business as The Chameleons. The applicant has previously held a liquor license at this location, was canceled by them, and is now reapplying for a new license. The proposed licensing period would begin on October 15th and would expire on March 31st of 2015, which is in accordance with city requirements in all other licenses. Fees are paid, applicant has provided proof of financial responsibility, and the background check done by Police Chief Jim Garice is attached, and everything is in order. I don't see Rhonda in the audience tonight. We sent her the information, but everything's in order for the council to entertain any public comment, and once that's done, close the public hearing and then take action on the license.
Okay. If anyone would like to make any public comment on this item, I would like you to step forward and to the desk there, state your name and address. Okay, it looks like we have no public comment on this item, so I guess I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dave Bruczek. All in favor of closing the public hearing on the issuance of the wine license? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the public hearing is closed. With that in mind, I guess the next thing would be approval of the license. Does anyone have any comments or questions from the council?
No. I'll make a motion to approve the license for Chameleon.
Okay, I got a motion by Dave Bruczek, seconded by Sean Ryan, to approve the license, which will end, begin on October 15th and end on March 31st. There's no other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. License has been approved. Next, we're gonna go into a public hearing about the assessment process for the 2014 Street project. I assume, Chris, you're gonna take the lead on this?
Yes, I am, Mayor, thank you. Mayor, members of the City Council, before you tonight is consideration of the assessments for the 2014 Street and Utility project. In essence, this is the, really the final main step in the public improvement process, with the exception of closing the contract and acceptance of project, which would take place next season. Just wanna let everybody that know who's here tonight for the assessment hearing, there is a sign-up sheet by the door if you could sign up before you leave, just so we know who was here. There is an agenda, and I believe everybody has, has a copy of that agenda. And real quick, too, the typical procedure here for the assessment hearing is I'll go through a brief presentation here. It'll be opportunity for the council to ask questions, and then the public hearing can be opened up for the public for comment, and typically those comments or questions will be directed to the Mayor, and then from there directed to either myself or to city staff to answer those questions. So, the purpose of tonight's hearing, of course, is this is an assessment hearing. This is part of the Minnesota statutes 429, which is the process and procedure where cities can do public improvements and assess a portion of that cost to the benefiting properties. And again, it outlines the procedures and rules that we follow to do this. The project, most people are aware of it, but just give a quick, for the people back at home, the 2014 project was, the bulk of it was, the backbone was Third Street from the railroad tracks on the west side to Columbus Avenue on the east side, First Avenue northeast between Second Street and Fourth Street, and Church Avenue from Third Street to Fourth Street, and then the little stretch of School Street off of First Avenue northeast, and an alley there on the backside between the, basically alongside the St. Wenceslaus Church. Not part of the assessment process, but part of the whole project and part of the funding is the, also the Settlers Park Trail. That'll show up in the financing numbers here, but it really isn't part of the assessment process, but was a part of the project. So, mail notices were sent to all the affected property owners. Published notices were also in the paper, again, per procedure with Minnesota statute 429, and that's why there'll be folks here tonight. And then to get into a summary of the project costs, I've got them outlined here, I'll briefly just go over them in rough numbers here. Total street and alley improvements, this is again, construction costs, total project costs, et cetera, for all these numbers, but street and alley improvements, a little over 1.1 million, or 66% of the cost of the project. Storm sewer improvements, 122,500 and change, 7.3%. Sanitary sewer improvements, 193,402, 11% of the cost of the project. Water system assessments, how about, are improvements, I'm saying, 164,000, or about 9.7%. The St. Wenceslaus alley widening, this was a private agreement with the church where they actually funded that cost at a request to widen the alley, if you recall that agreement, and that was just under $21,000, about 1.2% of the cost of the project. Prior, there was a private sewer service agreement, you may recall, that was $4,200. Again, that was financed or is assessed here in the assessment role. And then the Settlers Park Trail came out at just under $70,000, or 4.1% of the cost of the project. Total cost of the project estimated at just under 1.7 million. Now, if we look at the project financing on this, stormwater utility of 122,591, sanitary sewer utility, 159,907, water utility, 122,630. Private agreements, this was again, St. Wenceslaus Church for the widening of the alley, just under 21,000. Park funds for the Settlers Park Trail, just under 18,000. The Shakopee Meadowaken and Sioux Community Grant for Settlers Park, 52,000. Assessments, 517,387, or about just under 31% of the cost of the project. And then general levy picking up the balance of the cost of the project at 676,609, or about 40%. Again, for a total of one points, just under 1.7 million. Summarize this in a couple different ways, as I've done in the past, again, total project just under 1.7 million. If we take out the trail cost, because that's, obviously was in a different neighborhood, we're just over 1.6 million. We look at that from a contribution standpoint, the neighborhood contribution, again, 517,387, about 32% of that is through assessments, and the citywide contribution, which is again, all those utility funds, the stormwater, sanitary water, and general levy, covers the balance of 1.1 million and change, or about 68% of the cost of the project. Again, the assessments are following the assessment policy and the procedures that the city's followed for a number of years now, and that is again, to establish an annually established assessment rate for streets improvements, again, that fixed rate on a residential equivalent unit. Sanitary sewer, water, storm sewer and water main improvements are, which are the main, the main pipes out in the road, those are funded 100% through those utility funds, and new water services and sanitary sewer services are assessed based on an annual established assessment rate. Again, commercial, institutional, multifamily properties are assessed at a slight increase above single-family residential of 130%. And to break that out, to, again, to remind everybody how this works on a unit basis, again, these are single-family residential units, and I'll share what that, those numbers are again. So, your typical, single-family residential home, house, one property is assessed one unit on street, and then if they have a sewer and water service, they're assessed, of course, for those. For properties that are on a corner, if it's, one side is not being reconstructed or improved, the assessment's only a half a unit on the corner, with the idea that in sometime in the future, they would be assessed the other half unit on another project. For property that's on a corner where both streets are being improved, they get a half a unit, ooh. They get a half a unit on one, on this side, and a half a unit on this side, and it's a full unit, residential unit. Commercial properties are basically calculated in a similar fashion, basically projecting, essentially across how many lots or units would they be equivalent to in a residential from, in size, typically about 75 feet per unit, and we'll assess multiple units on commercial properties, which, or institutional, which was the case for like the school this year, and the hospital, et cetera. So, those, those dollar amounts, again, on a unit basis, the water service assessment for residential was $1,210 per unit. Commercial, we did have one for the hospital at, sorry, my eyes are bad and I can't read it. I think 2,650, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. It's very small on this screen. Sanitary sewer service at $1,015. Reconstruct streets for residential units, 7,960, I believe. Grab my paper here where I can actually read it. The commercial unit, again, is about 30% higher than the residential, it's at $10,348 per unit. And for the alley, which there was a number of parcels along the St. Wenceslaus property or parking lot that was assessed to the church, this is in addition to, to the widening that they paid for, so they paid $3,000 per unit, and I think it was about seven or eight units, something like that. So, with that, there, just a reminder of how the assessment process works, the notices, again, were sent to the individual property owners with the amount that their assessments are proposed to be. If approved tonight, they, we will actually send out a note, final notice, it's kind of a reminder of, again, this is the amount, and that they have the option to pay within 30 days without interest, or if they wish, it will actually just roll over to the property taxes payable over a 15-year period at just over 4%, 4.039% to be exact. And those would be, that would be payable with property taxes over that 15-year period. I do, a reminder to point out, there is a deferment process that is outlined in the notice of assessment. I guess if there's specific questions, I would definitely recommend they contact City Administrator Mike Johnson, but basically, the deferment is for homesteaded property for residents that are 65 years of age or older, or retired by virtue of permanent or total disability, or a member of the National Guard or Reserve's ordered to active-duty military service for whom it would be a hardship to make payments. And it's noted here that, as a deferment is based on age and, for, deferment's based on age and disability, the applicant must apply for deferment no, not later than 14 days after the assessments are adopted by the city council. Just so people are aware, the deferment process defers the payment, but it doesn't defer, obviously, the assessment or the interest that would accrue on that assessment, but it does give a person ability to not make those payments for a period of time. So, with that, I guess, oh, one thing I wanted to just point out, a little piece of, kinda, maybe trivia, you know, this is the fourth and last year of projects in this neighborhood. We did condense, if you recall, back in 2011, prior to the 12, 2012 project, we condensed four years of projects into three, so basically get through this, this neighborhood in four years. In that four-year period, the city invested, meaning the, citywide and the neighborhood invested about 8.4 million dollars in improvements, infrastructure improvements in this neighborhood. About 2.7 million was contribution directly from the residents or the neighbors, you know, through, through assessments, and about 5.7 million citywide through the utility funds and general levies. Quite an accomplishment, and in all my years of doing projects like this, this was, this was very rewarding four years, just to see the tran, the transition that happened in this neighborhood, so, little color commentary there, so. So, I guess with that, obviously, the project, bulk of the work is definitely complete for this year, the final work will be the final wear paving next year, and many punch list or warranty items, and then closing out the project probably by late in the summer or early fall, which is kinda usually when it falls in, so. With that, I guess, any questions regarding the information I've presented or I've provided?
Go ahead.
Um, the 2013 assessment rates, were they the same as this year?
The, the street assessments were exactly the same. There was no increase, we did not promote those. The sewer and water assessments, if you recall during the public hearing, the feasibility phase, we had looked at, obviously increased those with concerns with the cost of PVC and copper going up, and then we ended up bidding the water services as high-density polyethylene, and made a slight adjustment at the very end, but the net change on, on people were, there was no change in those assess, service assessment costs.
Okay, and then, these non-buildable parcels, they were not assessed?
Correct, and those are, I pointed those out as they were kind of an anomaly, they're actually owned by the adjacent property, they really should, they, they need to be combined, but they're non-buildable, and they couldn't get a building permit for that property, so essentially, it's, it's one property, it just happens to be two tax ID parcels, and I think we've even suggested that they get them combined.
One of these actually did combine in the interim period here from the initial start of the project till now.
Okay.
One on Third Street in particular.
Okay, and it probably hasn't shown up on the recent tax data, so.
We have historically tried to take a look at that, if the property is developable at some later future point in time, where somebody could put another house or another property on that, then typically, we will stub out utilities to that lot and provide for an assessment against that property.
Any other questions? Okay, I guess I will open the, the floor for any comments from the public. If you'd please come to the microphone and state your name and your address, and state your concern or your issue, and hopefully we can get answers for you.
Kay, well, tax 310, First Avenue. I just wanna compliment the city, the staff, all the subs that were hired, everything went absolutely excellent. We were made aware of changes that were gonna be made prior to people coming in. The only complaint I have is if the water truck could come in a little oftener, because some days those, the dust gets just really bad, so I think that's cheap in this big project. Thank you.
Any other one wanna make a comment?
Mayor, I would just, I know I see some that I've had contact with, I've had three individuals contact me about the deferral of special assessments. Chris identified the eligibility in regards to that, that anyone that is considering that would need to work with me on an application, but to defer the special payment, again, is that you have to be 65 years of age or older, or who is retired by virtue of permanent total disability, or is owned by a person who's a member of the National Guard or other military service who's been ordered into active duty. For those that take a look at it, the requirement is that there is a deferral, doesn't defer the interest, but defers the payment. The income limit varies based on family size, so it won't do me any good to kind of explain what they are, that it varies in whether you have one, two, three, four, or five individuals in your property, and so we also need to make, make application and work with an individual prior to the next council meeting, so that we can get the council to take that action, because residents have the chance to pay the assessment without interest within 30 days of tonight's action, but if they miss that date, then we will certify it to Scott County for collections beginning in 2015. I have over on the counter over there, a copy of the resolution explaining the requirements for the deferral of special assessments, as well as an application, if anybody wants to take that with tonight, if they think that they're eligible, if they contact City Hall or my office tomorrow, I'd be happy to answer any of those questions in case there is some of that interest.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else like to make any public comment? Okay, I guess I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mark Bartuschek. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Next on the agenda is approving the assessment rolls for the 2014 CIP project. Does anyone have any questions or issues they'd like to ask Chris again, or? Okay. Guess I'll look for a motion to approve the...
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Sean Ryan, seconded by Mark Bartuschek. If there's no other further comment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
Okay, passes 4-1. Thank you, Chris. Really has, in my opinion, really has improved those neighborhoods, they really do look nice, and I hope people enjoy them, so.
Mayor, one additional thing that nobody asked, is that if, if the assessment doesn't happen to get paid within the 30 days, then it gets certified again to Scott County for payments over a term of 15 years. The annual payment is spread between the May and October payment, so one-half the assessment is due with each tax payment that's due from Scott County.
Right.
Interest on the assessment is 4.039.
Okay, good, thank you. Next on the agenda, I guess Kay, you're gonna be the person, the chairperson of the Charter Commission, who's gonna update us on this. Before you start, Kay, I just would like to thank the Charter Commission with your leadership, and councilperson Scripture, and Ryan serving on the committee. I know, I'm sure it wasn't the funnest task to, to handle, but I think you guys did a great job, and talking to Scott, who actually was here earlier and had to run to Mon's View because they can't get enough people to even serve on their Charter Commission, I wanna thank you from behalf of the city for the great job that you guys did.
First of all, I'd like to tell you I like your new digs.
[laughing]
I counted six staff people here, and I'm so old, I remember when there was one, so we've come up in the world. The charter is something that I thought I would always avoid, because I thought it sounded very boring, but it is an important part of the city, because it survives, it serves as the local constitution. The last review of the document was done in 1994, and at that time, there were a lot of revisions. The ward system was changed, the electric utility came more under the auspices of the city, so there were a lot more changes. Our committee was made up of, I have to put my glasses on, I try to be vain, but I couldn't... Committee was made up of councilpeople, a former mayor, present councilpeople, Mike and Scott both probably did the bulk of the work in collating all our comments. There were no major changes made. You'll see the summary sheet on the back of your printout, and it shows that there was 587 changes. Fortunately, we had a member of the commission that does law review and contract review as a job, so she picked up on things that would've gone by all of us. Most of the changes were grammatical or ethical, editing or clarification. If you'd like, I can give you a brief overview of the few changes where revisions that we did make.
Sure.
You like that?
That'd be great, thank you.
Number one, the city administrator is no longer referred to as clerk, and that got really confusing. If you ever tried to read the old charter, it was a very, very confusing document, because it kinda flip-flop position, names of positions, so anytime that was referred to, that was changed. On page four, section 204, incompatible offices, it exempted members of the fire, police, and ambulance, it said that they could serve, and we deemed them to be employees, so that they are not volunteer, so they're almost considered employees, so that would be an incompatible position. Page four, 205, regarding vacancies was expanded on, and you can read all those topics in there. Page six, 302, special meetings may be called by two members of the city council and not three, and I believe that has something to do with the open meeting, correct, Mike?
Yeah, technically, that if three members, as Scott indicated in his review with the commission, indicated if three members get together, technically, that's a violation, so he reduced that to two, to make sure there was no meeting violation ahead of calling for the special meeting.
Either Mike or Kay, it says the mayor or any two.
Correct.
Is it, can, as I read this, that says that the mayor can call a special election, or two of us?
Correct.
Special meeting.
Yeah, why doesn't it have to be three for...
The reason being is that it would put you in a violation of the open meeting law, that three, a majority of the council cannot get together to take action.
Yeah, but this would be done, I'm assuming this would be done at a city council meeting, is that not true?
No, not necessarily. This is for a special meeting that hasn't been set or isn't regularly on the agenda.
Yeah, I understand it now.
Like the meeting we had earlier, I called that, so.
Page eight, section 313, the process of when ordinances and resolutions take effect was speeded up for when they become effective, and Mike cited different instances where the process was so long, it really just took too long, in the staff's opinion, to become effective. Page eight, 314, summary publications of ordinances indicates that the whole ordinance does not need to be published, and the summary may suffice. Page 12, chapter six, section 602 subdivision six, city administrator no longer has to physically inspect projects before approving bills. I don't think I saw Mike Johnson out there with the ruler measuring it all, so.
He should've been, right?
He's clear of that responsibility now.
Well, not yet.
In 90 days.
If you adopt it, yeah. Page 13, chapter six, section 604, there is no dollar limit set for purchases in the contracts. I guess it's necessary for some departments to pay for things that are beyond $5,000 because of timing.
Well, the, the action will be, is it's taken out of the charter, but it will be placed in action by council resolution.
And it will be determined annually. Page 21, chap-
What page was that?
And I have to tell you that, page 21, chapter 12, in the oath.
Oh.
Did I get that wrong? Okay.
Page 17.
17, correct. Sorry. Phrase "devolving of me" was removed, and I guess I never really knew what that meant. But that means to pass the duties on to another. We just didn't think that was significant. One of the more lengthy discussions we had was the length of the mayor's term. We discussed changing the term to two years. Ultimately, it was voted on to keep it two years. One night, we voted to change it back, or change it to four years, and the next meeting, we voted to keep it as two years. And the reasoning, and I did, we had one former mayor serving on the commission, and I did contact two of the living mayors, I'm not sure if there's three, I think there's two, they were both in favor of moving it to four. No, I take that back. One of the mayors that served on our commission wanted to move it to four. I'll tell you, Paul Flick wanted to move it to four, Bink Bender wanted to move it to four, Craig Sindler thought two was fine, and councilperson Sean Ryan stated a case where he felt if a mayor got on with two councilpeople every four years, there could be a gang mentality that would take over, and maybe override the actions of the council. And you can maybe explain a bit, Sean.
Well, I just, Anna Scott, Scott Riggs, the city attorney, had also brought up, there were several instances in other communities where there has been, we use the word gang mentality, where four years is a long time, and if you're not, the council is going against what really the overall feel of the citizens of the community were. Keeping the mayor at two with the rotating other councilpeople at two assures that there's at least three, or a quorum, that would happen every two years, if the citizens chose to replace those people. And we thought two would be a better scenario than four.
Correct. And to be fair, I just would like Bink's feelings expressed. He had the feeling that you just get on, the budget's already been set, you're not effective in any of that area the first year, and then the second year, you don't, you set the budget, and you don't really see how things go. So he doesn't, he didn't feel that's an effective long amount of time.
I can see it both ways, so.
And another thing, we looked at the historical record of New Prague, having a mayor run for that term hasn't been damaging. So we figure, why upset the apple cart? That's it.
Okay. Mike, do you have any comments on?
No, I think a number of them is, former councilmember Kay Wilcox identified, is that grammatical, structural, just capitalizing those kinds of changes, and then at the end of the charter revisions, the changes that were necessary as part of the transition last time, as far as implementing the new charter with the council members elected from wards, that the change that was associated with all of that. I included in your packet tonight, an outline of a timeline, that based on your discussion here following Kay's presentation, is that assuming you're in agreement with the proposed changes that are forthcoming from the Charter Commission, you could take an action tonight to introduce the ordinance and call for a public hearing, that following publication of these changes in the newspaper, which would occur on October 16th, is that you would hold a public hearing on Monday, November 3rd, at that time, to elicit any public comment concerning these proposed changes. We'll probably place it on the city website, but the entire charter, as changed with the additions and the stricken language, is required under the law to be published for the public's review, so.
In the newspaper?
In the newspaper, correct. But we'd also probably post it online, so that people can see it there as well.
Okay.
So then, if you did that and held the public hearing on the 3rd, depending upon whether there's any changes or not, under the premise and assumption that it would be adopted on November 3rd, we would have to publish the final ordinance then on November 13th, and then it would become effective 90 days after publication, or not till next February 11th. So that in effect, then, would conclude the process that you asked the Charter Commission to undertake, and so essentially, since this housecleaning kind of cleans things up, going back to 1994, then the Charter Commission will be required to meet at least once a year, to determine whether there's any needed changes or not. The end of this year, we have to report and file a report with the district court judge, as well as doing that on an annualized basis.
Okay. Any questions for Mike or Kay?
I have no questions. I have some comments, or, well, I guess I do have some questions. On page four of the document that we have in front of us, top of the page subdivision three, it's a spelling, or grammatical error, all boards or commissions should be commissions. Subdivision seven, in the last line, I don't understand. Going back, city council determines it is not necessary for the successful operation of the board or commission to the city to be used solely to reduce tax levies for bonded indebtedness of the city. I don't understand why to be used solely to reduce tax levies. Why would you have that verbiage in there, instead of, say, by city council decision? Isn't that...
Sir, are you on beat?
I'm on.
Page four.
Page four.
Subdivision seven.
Subdivision seven. This is the new, what I have in front of me, it would be, it's chapter two, 2.02 subdivision seven.
Basically, what they're saying is, if there's any funds, council could take the funds from that board and commission, but they could only use it to reduce bonds, correct?
Yeah, that...
Bond indebtedness.
Number one, they didn't choose to change the language. It is as it was prior. And so as you read that, except when previously pledged, that in the case of the board or commission, let's use the utilities, that they have certain reserves that are generated by the operations, that are already directed to pay for that, that if for any reason, there are more than what is needed to run the operation of the utilities, or to pay existing debt service, and it's deemed extra, the council may, by resolution, determine that if those aren't needed for the successful operation of, by the board or commission to the city, they can use that to reduce tax levies for bonded indebtedness, to help speed up the repayment of any debt obligations, if you chose to do that. So if somebody thought there was too much of a surplus in water, or electric, storm, or sanitary sewer, for whatever reason, you could choose to determine as part of your final approval of the budget, that you would deem it prudent to apply excess revenues that exist in those funds towards debt service.
Okay, I was looking at this, I think, probably erroneously, because I was looking at it as part of, say, department budget, if they didn't use all of their allocated budget, that we would have to use that for, okay, then that's my error. Thanks, Mike.
But the first interpretation is the council may by resolution. So, the council has a choice, and basically, what it's saying, except when pledged, previously pledged by the board or commission, and approved by the council, is part of kind of the budget process, you may by that resolution require the board or commission to transfer any portion of the reserves that are generated by the activities that are not necessary for the successful operation of the commission, to be used to reduce tax levies or bonded indebtedness. So it's a tool that you have available to you, should you feel that somebody has accumulated too many assets within that utility fund, or board or commission, and that you could apply that to reduce bonded indebtedness, or a tax levy that might be needed to fund those operations. So you retain that flexibility and authority to do that.
In other words, you couldn't give people rebates.
Yeah.
Counsel. Any other?
Yeah, I have a few others. Section 204, same chapter, the last sentence is just a little confusing to me, I guess. No former member shall be appointed to any paid appointive office or employment under the city, which was created, or for which the compensation was increased during the former member's term of office. I don't understand that, Kay.
Well, I read it as, if I raise the salary of Ken, I could not come back and be planner for a year.
All right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does.
Yeah.
Okay. Section 205, now, I'm not a lawyer. I guess if I were, number eight would not be so confusing to me. That sentence just goes on and on and on, it makes me, it reminds me of one of my professors in dental school. In his exams, he would put, go on and on and on, and every time, there was some new fact that you had to take into account. That's the way I read this. I started it, I think I read this three or four times, and I still didn't understand.
Were brought to us by the lawyer.
That's what I figured.
But in all fairness, these are out of existing Minnesota state statutes, that because they're not all codified, or located in the same portion of the state statutes, that you can see this. Scott brought these from different locations within the Minnesota state statutes into this, so that there was more of an understanding of what's there, but it is taking language out of the state statutes.
Okay. Then it's understanding.
Claim the legislature for that.
Yeah. I figured it was lawyers or legislature that wrote that up.
But the commission, the Charter Commission had significant discussion, and when they were taking a look at that, you know, the key question was, is that, well, under what scenarios or situations, is there an expiration or a vacancy in the term of office, or what has to happen to create such a term in office? And so that's where, in the compilation of this information, Scott chose, based on conversing with the commission, to try to bring that information to the table. Otherwise, most people couldn't go find this in one particular location.
That would be true, yeah. I liked the general format of what they did. I think it clarified a lot of things.
Any others?
Oh, yeah.
You had much, you had much time at the lake.
No, I didn't get this until late last night, and I only had about an hour to read it over. I did not get through the whole thing. Next page, it's still chapter two, section 2.10. Here you have, let's see, the third line from the bottom, you have departments or commissions. I would assume, since you did this throughout, that we use commissions to refer to one of the commissions. Don't you also need to put or boards in there? For example, planning and zoning commission, park board, I assume that you're referring to all of those, but you're eliminating the boards? So if you, if I'm reading this right, and you want to be complete, it would seem that you'd have to put in commissions or boards. Or am I not reading it right, Kay?
I guess that we missed that, or...
There's two of those lines in there, the third and the last.
Hold on to me.
You have that again in following page, section 303, so it's chapter three.
But wouldn't, Dave, wouldn't boards be part of an appointive office?
It would.
I don't know.
If you go back to section 2.02, it talks about the council may adopt enabling resolutions, establishing appointed boards and commissions to carry out various undertakings and assignments as outlined in the enabling resolutions. The only recall I can have, without Scott being here to answer it specifically, is even though we had boards or commissions, I think he indicated that everything was a commission in one form or of another, but if we go back to make these changes, then we have to take a look at, then you can't go forward tonight to make these corrections or insertions. Then we need to go back and amend the process, have the Charter Commission review it, to make sure they're in concurrence, and then we could go forward to call the public hearing, just so you're aware of that.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. That was explained earlier.
Okay.
I guess some of these are my comments, because I felt they were, well, the wording wasn't always the same, because on subdivision three, you have all boards or commissions. In other places, it's boards and/or commissions, or boards and commissions, or boards or commissions. Here, you didn't do that.
Whereafter section 2.10, were you at, David? Or was your next one?
It was, no, 2.10, 3.03.
And what, specifically in 3.03?
Okay. To the extent provided and required by the laws of the state of Minnesota, all meetings of the city council and its committees, there again, if you want to be consistent, I would have put committees or boards, or boards or committees.
Commissions, you mean?
Commissions, rather.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. If you're using committees, that probably couldn't, would imply boards or commissions. Although a committee, to me, is a different entity.
Correct. It could be a committee of the council.
All right. So that probably wouldn't apply, would it?
It's a point of question that we can certainly explore and take a look at.
Yeah, we can check with, section 30, 3.07, I had a problem with the second, the third, I'm sorry, second sentence, second and third sentence. Majority of all city council members shall constitute a quorum, but a smaller number may adjourn from time to time. The city council may by rule provide a means by which a minority may compel the attendance of absent members. I don't understand quite what that means.
Almost need to have Scott there for that discussion, but what he's saying, if I recall that discussion, Kay, and I think you do too, is that a majority, that depending upon certain actions, that a majority of all city council members shall constitute a quorum.
That part, I understand, that it's...
Five, but a smaller number may adjourn from time to time. It doesn't take a quorum, or a majority, to actually adjourn a meeting.
Okay.
But then, when we get into the discussion, the council may by rule provide a means by which a minority may compel the attendance of absent members, there was a lot of discussion on that, and he went into a lot of that, but I'm not certain that I can provide the legal ease to further clarify that, without really having Scott responding on that.
Okay.
So that would need a clarification to answer that in more detail, just like he did with the commission. But we did have the discussion, and he explained to him why that can't happen.
Now, I don't know if you need to change that wording in there. I'm not...
It's a clarification of how or what. You're looking for, to understand it.
Right. And if, you know, you and I don't understand it, it might be that a lot of people in the future don't understand it unless they get Scott back to explain it.
Okay.
That's as far as I got, reading this over, so... I can't comment any further on things I might have found.
Okay, any other comments?
No. So what's the next step, then, Mike? Because of those few word changes, we have to reconvene the charter commission after that's updated for approval, and then basically come back through this process again?
I believe, if I recall specifically from Scott and his explanation, is that the only way that this could proceed to go to a public hearing would be the adoption by unanimous action of the council, assuming there were no changes.
Correct.
If there are changes, then those need to be reviewed, re-looked at by the charter commission, and then they would have to re-confer to the council, the adoption of the ordinance then.
And Kay, what did we have, six or seven meetings with this? Scott Riggs, the city attorney, was at every one of them and went through this with a... How many times did we read through this? Multiple times?
Quite a few. You can tell by the number of changes on your last sheet there.
Right. And, you know, I think we're... I feel confident with where it's at, as far as Scott's approval as well, and I wish he was here to answer a couple of those questions with Dave, but do you recall, or Mike, or Pat, that commissions, boards, they're basically interchangeable, the same things. It doesn't necessarily have to by Minnesota state statute. Was that it, if I remember right? I'm not sure, I'm looking for some help, but I know that the commission, the charter commission, with the amount of work that was in there, I'd hate to have to go through that process again.
Well, what I'll say about it is that that didn't change. That's what it said in the original charter, because the black words are-
Right.
-you know, if they're blue or red. So it was like that before, so...
I guess you have to ask Scott if those terms can be used interchangeably.
Well, I think what Councilmember Brusick is asking for is just the consistency, as we've tried to do in the rest of it. Do we need to finish that in this area?
But, and I'm asking Councilperson Brusick, though, is it that big of a sticking point that you feel you can't vote yes for that tonight and put the commission through the process again?
Yeah, we could look at it next year, these points, and then you can finish looking at it, and perhaps...
I mean, I really feel confident that with the city attorney going, being at every meeting with us, that this flies in every sense of the word, from state statute to the other charters that he, the other cities he represents and has worked with. And I just...
And he said he read it over five times.
Well, we, and so did...
You know, at the last meeting, so...
So did we. So I guess I'm asking-
I just don't know what the...
-Councilperson Brusick, if a few of those little minor changes, I mean, if you really feel like you can't vote for it, then I understand, and then we can reconvene the charter commission and go through that process again, but I guess I would like to see that we, since the attorney was at every one and...
You know, with most of these, Sean, I don't have an issue. I do have an issue with 3.07, and if you all want to vote for it to go forward, that's fine with me. I'll abstain, or I'll leave the meeting, and you can vote. I'm sorry that if I'm creating a problem for people, I'll walk out. You guys can vote, and it goes through. I don't know what's going to happen-
I think we need all five votes.
-because I didn't read Page 8 on, and I'm sorry, but I just didn't have the time.
Right.
Yeah. I just think it's really too bad that Scott's not still here, because I'm sure he'd be able to explain these.
Well, I agree with that.
Yeah.
That would be convenient, but he isn't. And I think, Dave, though, we need all five votes, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, we do.
It has to be, I'm just trying to get to the specific part of it in there, under that subdivision 7, under Chapter 410.
He must be looking at something else.
Maybe the old one?
Well, I'd like to have Dave feel comfortable about it anyways.
Well, no, that's all right. I'll just...
There is nothing driving, when you take a look at this, and Scott was not available, and we anticipated that there could very well be discussions in regards to this, that if we need to have him back and to go through that, that there's nothing magic about in doing this, whether the process, we had another couple of weeks or a month onto the process to get through doing it, there's nothing driving the adoption of this that says it has to be done by February 11th.
Right. He's going to be back at the next meeting anyway, why don't we wait?
No, but it has to go once those changes are made.
Has to go back to the charter commission.
Correct, if there's changes.
Yeah, you know, he may be able to explain them to Dave where it's comfortable.
Why don't we just wait? Why don't we just wait till the next meeting?
But in taking a look at it, in the end product, whether we get it out and get it finally adopted, if the process were to go through and completed by February 11th, or whether that shifts into March of 2015 or a little bit later-
Right, it doesn't matter.
There really is nothing that's causing any major delays. I think the hard part has already been done, and what you're doing now is some minor tweaking or modifications in the process. The question should be asked and clarified and taken care of all at one time, so if it has to go back to the charter commission, we can take care of that in one more meeting, and then it comes back, and then we adopt and start the process of whatever that's going to be. But there's nothing driving the end result that the...
Right.
Yeah, I understand that. My feeling was, is I wanted to kind of gauge if it was a serious sticking point with Dave on some of those tweakings, because all, and the only reason I was, I'm fine with going to another charter commission meeting. I just know some of the other charter commission members were very happy because it was, because it hadn't been looked at for 20 years, and now we spent six or seven nights on it for hours and hours per night, that they were very happy that it was done. We finally thought we had a complete project.
Can you defer the vote until he gets explanation? So it doesn't have to go back to the commission?
Well, yeah, I mean...
Maybe it doesn't have to go back.
Well, we are, we're just...
I think what we're suggesting, Kay, is that we'll table it and have Scott here at the next meeting, because he's required, we have some other issues, he's going to be here, and Dave can get his answers, his questions answered, and if they're sufficient enough, and he's comfortable with Scott's explanations-
Answers, and we'll pass it.
-you know, then we can put up a vote there, and that's what Mike's saying. It might, it might not go back to you guys. It might be just deferred two weeks before the vote.
We need the lawyer here.
Yeah. So...
But if we do change a word or two, it has to go back to the commission.
Technically, I believe that's correct.
We'd have to reconvene to rediscover it. Okay. And that, the commission has to vote on it. Okay.
And then obviously, in all likelihood, would be, would be a very short meeting again, but that's the process.
Like I said, I have no problem going to another meeting. I just know that there was a sigh of relief amongst a lot of the board members, and you were there too, that we finally had this, and I just wanted to make sure that a word or two didn't...
But I don't think anybody was under the impression either, is that if it did come to the council, where two of you were on the charter commission, that the other three might have some questions in that, and it might not go as simply as we have it tentatively laid out, that there could be discussion and debate, that maybe there needed to be some other changes. So what I put together in a timeline is the ideal or best-case scenario, and we can modify that if need be.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's table it then.
I'm sorry, but I thought with a document like this, and this thing going to be, again, used for many years, probably without much change, I would like it to be as perfect as we can get it.
Well, the next changes you were hearing is that whatever didn't get changed this year, and let's say you had some of them, and you were weighing whether it needed to be done or not, they're required, the charter commission is required to come back and meet again in 2015 at least once, and they talked about waiting until the legislative process was done to see if there were any legislative changes that might occur that would change something within the confines of that. So that's the other alternative you have, is do you want to do them right now, or do you want to wait and pick them up again next year? You can have that discussion at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I would prefer doing that and let the lawyer look at it. That way, we'll know.
If you have any further changes-
I will look at the rest of it.
-if you get sufficient time, if you'll get those to me, is I'll make sure I get those passed on to Scott, so that he can look at that in total.
I will do that, Mike. Thank you.
Okay. Well, based on the, it sounds like a consensus that we're going to table this item until the next meeting. Kay, thank you very much. Like I said previously, I want to thank you for your leadership on the charter commission, and it's something that needed to be addressed, and I'm glad that you decided to serve on the committee, along with the other committee members, so thank you very much, and...
I'd just like to say the previous charter commission met something like 26 times, so we're still good.
Okay. Hopefully, we don't have to meet that long.
Thanks, Kay.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Habitat for Humanity. Ken, are you taking that?
I will.
You guys have been kind of quiet on that side of the room.
We'll get it going now.
Okay.
All right. We had a letter that was received on September 30th, so almost a week ago, from Habitat for Humanity. They are proceeding with the construction of their fifth home here in New Prague. They had built four previously between 2005 and 2012. In the case of those four previous homes, they had made a request to the city council to reduce their permit fees specifically by 50%, and that is included in the past building permit, plan review, park fees, and water and sewer connection fees where they've been applicable. Two of the homes did not have park or sewer connection fees, as they were houses on existing lots previously that were tore down, and they didn't have to repay the park or connection fees. But in the case of this request here tonight, it's a greenfield lot, nothing's ever been built on there, so there would be waiver requests on the park fee and water and sewer connection fees, in addition to the building permit and plan review fees. So they're requesting the 50% reduction. I have listed the fees on those five categories for your view here tonight. The reduction would equal a savings of just under $5,500 for Habitat for Humanity, and staff's recommendation is to approve the waiver of the 50% of the fees, including building permit, plan review, park fee, and water and sewer connection fees for their new home to be constructed at 1119 Village Street Southeast.
Any questions? Anyone? That Village Street behind us, yeah. Okay. If there's not any other questions, I guess I'll make a motion to reduce the fees for the Habitat for Humanity.
So move, or second, sorry.
Second, I'll give Sean Ryan, since it's in his neighborhood.
That's fine.
Second by Sean Ryan. There's no other further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Okay.
I do have a question. I'm sorry, I just noticed it. Is it Village Street Northeast or Southeast, Mike? Or Ken?
Southeast.
Southeast.
It's behind where I live.
All right. The letter from Julie Schmillin has Northeast, so I assume she made an error there.
That would be correct.
Okay. No problem.
Okay, next. Are you taking this one, Ken, too? Resolution of a...
Yes, I will.
Tax forfeiture land?
If the council remember, I think in the past couple of years, we've had probably two previous situations where, have received letters from Scott County, I believe, in the past, on tax forfeit property. And we have one this year specifically for 118 Second Street Southwest. It's a single-family home in a single-family zoning district. The property taxes on this particular property are delinquent back to 2008, and those unpaid taxes and fees amount to a little over $12,500. That includes property taxes, as well as special assessments in the delinquent amount. In particular, for the special assessment, this is the first tax forfeiture property that we've had come the way of the city council's review that was subject to a past capital improvement project assessment. In particular, this is from a 2006 CIP. The original balance was $8,145, and taking into account if the property taxes were paid from the original start of the payment on this CIP project, which would have been 2007 payable taxes, they would only owe a little over $3,800. But in the case of this, they have not actually paid all of those back taxes, so it's actually a pretty substantial dollar amount remaining yet on the principal that would be paid, that would be owed yet to the city, excuse me. When the property is sold at auction, the county did indicate that any of the proceeds that they obtained would be used to pay back the unpaid taxes, including the special assessments. However, the situation with these tax forfeiture properties is when they are auctioned out, or, excuse me, when they are, go tax forfeiture to the state, the special assessments are canceled. So at the time of the sale, and you'll notice in the resolution here, I think that was a resolution replaced in here, Mike, that we had talked about, we have asked the city council, it's actually the, let's see here, second to last whereas, it starts with if parcel number is sold by auction at La Sura County, we are requesting that La Sura County notifies us in writing the date of the auction, so that the city can preserve its ability to recertify the assessment. So once it is, this property is sold at auction, city council does have to essentially, like a brand-new assessment project on a property, recertify that special assessment. So after the sale, we'll see how much has been paid back on the taxes, we'll take a look at any accrued interest and everything, and that'll be looked at for a new recertification of that special assessment on the property. So we don't know when exactly the sale could be. It could be yet in 2014, it could be early 2015. So we've just put that whereas in the resolution, specific to notifying us that we know when that happens, otherwise, we wouldn't know when the auction would occur. Back to the options for the property, as we've discussed in the past, whenever a tax forfeiture property comes up, the council can purchase the property, and this would allow the city to purchase it for a public purpose. We could use, the city could use the property as it would like, but it would generally become tax-exempt. And let's say the city wanted to use it as a rental property, it would then become taxable if it were a rental home. City's not recommending that option at this point. Option number two is request conveyance of the property, and this is where we could request that it be conveyed to the city free of charge for a public use, and this is very specifically defined as a park or trail type use, and not just open space. So this really wouldn't qualify for the request, being a single-family home in this situation. And then the third option, which is what staff is recommending tonight, is to simply approve the parcel for public sale, and that is what the resolution attached to the packet is written to the effect of, that it would allow it to go up for public auction, adjacent property owners are notified of the sale. Notice also goes out to the general publication for anyone to submit a sealed bid to the county to purchase the property, and ultimately, this would keep the property on the tax rolls and allow it to continue to be used as a single-family home. So staff does recommend approving a sale of this property for sale to the public. Any other questions? Issue is a little clouded with that CIP issue hanging out there, but in effect, we have to recertify. We'll recertify with the dollar amount after all the past taxes of the proceeds of the sale are accounted for, and that'll be in front of you, I'm guessing, probably early 2015, generally speaking, would be when that might happen.
So when we recertify it, does that mean we get the money right away, then?
No, it would...
Or it'd just go on to the thing, so if someone else tried to sell it afterwards, there would be that...
Well, whoever would purchase the property would be notified, as were the people here tonight, indicate what the principal amount is, the interest rate, that was obviously specific to that project from 2006, and then they could continue to pay on that till it was completed, or they could choose to pay it off in a lump sum, similar.
Do they know, will they know about that before they bid on it?
No, because it's not actually of record at this point. Once it went tax forfeiture, it is wiped off the books.
They should know about it, though.
Yeah, isn't there like...
That's corrupt.
Good for them to know, but yeah, it is literally not of existence.
No, no, I know what you're saying. I was the fir-, I was pretty sure you were going to say that, and I'm like, that's wrong. The person that bids on it should know there's going to be another $8,000.
Yeah, because...
If we would obviously tell anybody that calls- If we would obviously tell anybody that calls, that it would be, in effect, a...
Right, but the odds of somebody looking into that are...
At an auction are pretty slim.
Less than 20%, I would guess.
Ken did the research, I think what he's saying is the principal balance of the assessment was $8,145, the amount that remains is $3,801.
Oh, but still, okay, so it's 38...
If we get enough proceeds to pay the delinquent, which you would assume would occur, yes. But even so, it is a chunk of money.
And they'll get charged interest once it's put back on?
Yes.
Yes.
It just seems so bizarre, 'cause when somebody sells a house normally, then this would all be paid up and right away, right?
But it's on the record, but Ken is saying, once it goes into forfeiture, special assessments are eliminated off the record, so...
I know, it just seems like, why do they have a...
I guess my point is, if the government's powerful enough to get their money anyway, they should figure out a way to make sure people are notified, anyway.
Is there any possibility?
That's kinda robbing, that's not right.
When you think about the whole special assessment process, and how we have to notify them by mail, and we have to put it in the paper and all that, and then, and now we're just gonna put it on somebody?
No, we do, they, it's the same process, that we have to go through notifications and everything, it'll just be at the, you know, the remaining amount owed.
No, and it's fine.
Go through the same stuff?
For one property owner.
And...
No, but it's, I mean, if a person's living there, at least they know about it, you know? It's just, all of a sudden, this guy's gonna go and buy a property, and there's something attached to it that they're not notified by the government about.
There'd be a lot more.
And that's wrong, that they should, they should know about that.
Put a sign in the lawn?
This is why people get mad at the government, 'cause things just pop up like that, so I mean, that's, it's an issue.
Ken, can we...
I'm not gonna say we can't do it, I'm just saying, and it's not anybody here's fault, either, it's just, that's one of the many things that people get angry about.
And they should.
Can we recertify this before?
We cannot until after the auction takes place.
Yeah, 'cause it's forfeited.
Yeah, that doesn't make a lot of, it's probably a legislative screw-up.
Have to legally tell them or anything, either? The auctioneer, or whoever?
No, that's really, you know, they're buying the property as-is.
With any...
They would call, and we would certainly inform them of the situation with the property, but yeah, it's an unusual situation, definitely.
That's fine. Go on with it. We're not gonna change it, anyway, but...
Yeah, we, you know, we're trying to protect that we even get any money back by having them notify us, so...
No, right, right, and we should, but it's just, I have no problem with it, if they would at least know about it, but...
Can we notify the sheriff, who is, I assume, doing the auction, that yes, in fact, the city intends to recertify this?
Well, we've notified our intent in the resolution.
Resolution?
Well, I guess we can encourage them to make it known.
This will all be handled by the county auditor treasures office, and so we interacted with her, which is why, and the city attorney, which is why you see that language here to begin with, is to make sure that we know when that auction's occurring, so that we're on top of being able to take a look at and monitoring what's happening, so that we can get that recertification, or the, of the special assessments replaced on the property the way it is. But a copy of this goes to her in the process of the auction, so...
But that only protects us, that doesn't protect the buyer. That's what we're after. I think we should send a note back, and they should be required to list that before somebody buys it. That's wrong. People should know about that.
County would be following the state statutes in the process of what they're doing, and...
Yeah, but they could notify them.
And this letter from...
They pull any of other, they pull plenty of other stunts to make sure they get money, so they could go out of their way to be nice to the buyer.
And this letter from the Lister County Auditor Treasurer says "at the time of sale."
That's not, not correct information, that's why we talked to Scott about that.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I'd like to make a motion to...
Approve the resolution.
To approve the resolution, yes.
Okay, I'll second it. A motion by Dave Brusick, second by Chuck Nicolai, to approve the resolution that we are gonna approve the parcel for public sale. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Okay. Next. Ken, again, huh?
Yep, couple more here for ya. Looks like we've got these listed specifically separate, two resolutions. First resolution is specific to the approval of the certification of mowing and property maintenance charges to the property tax roll. We had this year, specifically on the resolution here in front of you tonight, just over $6,000, which we are looking to certify to the property tax roll for mowing and other property maintenance charges. Of that $6,000, about $3,000 were administrative fees that help offset the cost of going out to these properties, sending the letters, following up throughout the year, making sure that they're continuing to be mowed, et cetera. And that was just on 10 properties for the year. We're actually down quite a bit overall, citywide, on the number of properties that we had to mow. That's not to say, as you see in here, we had 60 violation letters, which also is down from the past. I think we've got a number of the property owners finally figuring out that it's cheaper for them to just hire a contractor than to pay us to hire, very likely, the same contractor, and add $50 per mowing event on there as a service fee for us to monitor and take care of that. So we're actually, I think we're moving in the right direction, but still, 10 properties we had to continue to maintain throughout the year. You can see the past years, I mean, we were up nearly to $20,000 in certified mowing charges back in 2012, so I think we're moving in the right direction.
Can we raise the rates, so we can recoup the same amount of money?
We've actually raised, we've raised that fee continually over the past few years, and I think it's...
You can keep raising them.
We could, but I think we're at a point where we finally got enough people to realize why I should just take care of this myself, whether it be a bank, or just a property owner that maybe doesn't realize that they need to keep their property up better. So that resolution is the first one in your packet for the certification of the taxes to, or the charges to the tax roll. So I don't know if you wanna me to do the overview of the second one?
No, let's discuss the first one and approve that resolution, and then we'll get into the utilities one. Anyone have any questions?
I move, we approve.
Motion by Mark Bartusik, second by Sean Ryan, to approve putting the $15,000, or no, $6,035 on the taxes records. Any other further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Okay, that one passes, five zero. Now, the next one, utility.
All right, so for utilities, we had, since, as well, since we have done, since 2009, is certify unpaid utility bills to the property taxes. This particular year, and actually, the dollar amount from $10,691.52 is actually gonna be reduced. We have people that have paid since we wrote this resolution, and I don't specifically have that listing here tonight for you, but as they're paid, we take them up before it's certified on October 15th to the county. And some other people had paid portions of their amount that would be assessed, so it'll be reduced accordingly, so I do wanna note that. These are specifically for unpaid utility bills, which include various charges, water, sewer, electric. In particular, I believe, the charges can be assessed to the property owner, and then for renters, they are able to access everything except for the electric charges, so if you remember that whole discussion from a few years back, and Bruce, if you're still, you can probably comment on that further.
It's electric and nat... It's electric and natural gas, right?
Yeah, 'cause the...
Right.
So again, just over $10,000, it's actually gonna be reduced by, a little bit by October 15th, when this actually does get certified to the county, so that's about all I can tell you about that one, but that is a second resolution in your packet.
Is there some reason they don't let us assess the electric?
By state statute, that one.
Yeah.
The legislators did the...
Electric or natural gases cannot be assessed.
They just decided that, okay?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Dave Brusick, second by Mark Bartusik, to approve the resolution of certifying the utility bills to the tax rolls, as of, whatever the balance is, as of October 15th. Other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda, before the meeting tonight, we did interview Corey Magnussen, who applied to replace Matthew Lash and finish out his term on the park board. So as this time, I'm going to make a appointment of Corey Magnussen to the park board, starting effective immediately, and running through the term, and I think it's 2017, yeah, 5/31/17, replacing Matthew Lash.
A second, though.
So I guess I'll need a motion to...
Oh, I thought there was a motion.
No, I just, I made the appointment, so if you wanna...
Go move.
Motion by Mark Bartusik, second by Pat Scripture, to approve the appointment of Corey Magnussen as the new park board member. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? And Ken, we did tell him that, you know, expect to get a packet, and the meeting is gonna be next, next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda, consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda? Any questions?
Question before I forget.
Sure.
Where's the meeting for sure, tomorrow night?
City Hall. The, in the council chambers.
Council chambers?
Yeah, the baseball.
At what time?
7:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions on any of the consent agenda items? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Pat Scripture, second by Sean Ryan, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Okay. Miscellaneous, fun part of the meeting. Bruce, you've been kinda quiet today. That's what I like to hear. Jim?
I am.
Okay.
Other than your CDs for the operation plan, or your review.
And just a quick question, Jim. Dojinki went well, from your pers...
Very well.
Okay.
Minor issues, little alcohol, makes for some poor decisions for some, that have too much, but relatively no problems.
Good. Awesome, good. Glenn, anything?
I've got nothing.
What about Dojinki, from your standpoint?
Went very well on the public works side, also. No problems whatsoever.
You guys did an excellent job again this year.
Thank you, the guys do a great job.
I've had some comments that they're amazed how the little gremlins come out in the middle of the night, and have that thing looking like it does, that by, you know, I was downtown at 6:30 in the morning on Saturday, and you never know, and that there was 5,000 or 6,000 people downtown the night before, so...
Thank you, the guys do a great job.
Yes. Thank them for me.
I will.
Ken, anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Patrick? Mary Jo, one of these days, she's gonna surprise us. Mike?
Couple of quick items. One is, I got an update late this afternoon from Congressman Walz's staff person, Sean Schlesser, that he's had an update from Elise La Forest, she's, if you recall, with the National Park Service for the Northeast and the Midwest region. She contacted the General Services Administration, and they have no further progress to report right now, but what Sean said he did know, and, you know, it's not a whole lot new, is that the GSA is working on a similar case right now, and we are next in the queue to be acted on. The GSA and the National Park Service had the opportunity to visit the site this summer, we knew they had been there, they just never made contact with us, and he said we've not reached a barrier for this transaction, transaction. So it's still in line, or soon to be acted upon, is the best I can tell you.
Okay.
On that front. On our compensation benefit plan, received from Ann late this afternoon, kind of the salary survey summary and additional component pieces, came in late, I was able to meet with Patty, and we had a brief conversation to understand what's contained in it, but if we do our checking by Wednesday to verify all of the numbers and salaries and positions, and all those kind of things are correct by Wednesday, she will have a final report midweek next week for the council, and so then we'd be ready to set a workshop session with the council and the utilities to go through, have her out and go through the report. So we should have the final report midweek next week.